Call the meeting to order. I think we have a special treat this evening. The colors are going to be presented by the Lowell High School Air Force Junior ROTC Cadets. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I know we're all very proud of the Junior ROTC, Air Force ROTC program at Lowell High School. Think we've heard from them on a number of solemn occasions, most recently, I think, at a very special commemorative service in the 50th anniversary of the attacks of September 11th, which was a very nice ceremony sponsored by the Junior ROTC program. And I know the committee members were there, and it was really one of the few events in Lowell that day to recognize the 50th anniversary of September 11th. So, this is a group that continues to impress, whether it's at funerals around the city, or at the opening night of the 2004 World Series, or events that we just had from September 11th a few weeks ago. So, we have chosen this evening to, as our spotlight on excellence, to recognize the Lowell High School Air Force Junior ROTC program. I'd ask the superintendent to make some remarks.
The Air Force Junior ROTC unit from Lowell High School, which is Massachusetts Unit 771, has for the fifth consecutive year earned the Distinguished Unit Award for the academic year 2005-2006. The Distinguished Unit Award recognizes the personal growth and accomplishments of the cadets, the contributions of the instructors as the mentors for the cadets, and the support of the school and the community. The Distinguished Unit Award is limited to the very best of the best of the nation's 794 Air Force Junior ROTC units. For this, for the Lowell unit to win for a fifth consecutive year is really an awesome accomplishment. I'd like to turn the program over to Master Sergeant Robert Jakes.
Thank you, Dr. Bear, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, and the members of the school committee. We are honored here tonight to be able to come here before you, to go ahead and share with you just for a few minutes, some of the things that we believe that our program is all about. We went ahead and put up some books together, which we want you to take and keep, and kind of highlights many of the achievements that our cadets and our staff, along with the school and our high school, and I must say, our headmaster, who is a great supporter, he hired me 11 years ago and said, you know, "Make, make things happen, and I'll be there for you guys." And for you, sir, I thank you very much for what you've done, and our program has grown under Dr. Bear's leadership. So, with, with all that, we look at our, our young people here today who presented the colors, forming onward into college in the near term, and if you look inside there, you'll see that we went ahead and, over since 2000, we've achieved over $937,000 worth of scholarships for our cadets, and many of the things that happened is because of you folks here tonight, when you support some of the things like going to different universities and colleges out of state, and I think I commend your, your, your efforts to go ahead and have the confidence in us to go ahead and bring that to our youth here. But at this time, we'd like to have our group commander, Priscilla Nunes, and our vice commander, Captain Joe Harris, if I could, if they would come forward. Mr. Mayor, if you'd come down here to center stage, they would like to make a presentation to you, sir.
Thank you.
Tonight, we are going to present to our mayor a symbolic plaque with a T-shirt framed, and the plaque reads, "To Mr. Bill Martin, Mayor of the City of Lowell, from the cadets and staff of Air Force Junior ROTC MA 771, for completing 15,000 hours of community service for the school year 2005 and 2006, and was achieved on the 19th day of June 2006," that's why we put that date in there. Last two years, our cadets and staff achieved over 25,000 hours of community service, and their goal this year, they want to go ahead and achieve 20,000 hours, which is going to be such a, it's going to be a great task if they can do that. So, we'd like to present that to you from the cadets and staff of MA 771. And if I may, I'd like to have our, our instructors, if they could stand over here. Lieutenant Colonel Bob Olson, Mass Sergeant Kevin Casilli, and Tex Sergeant Dave Smith. Without these, these fine colleagues of mine, they would never have been able to do the community service, because every time we do community service, one or two of us have to be there, and that's weekends, and that's weekends throughout the whole year. I think the difference is, is that we get to know our, our cadets, our, our kids, so to speak, more than most people, because we spend so much time with them. And, you know, that's, that's the family that we kind of grow, and this year alone, we started with like 225, and we, and we started at 225, and last night, I think it was 494 students that we had in the program. So, we're cracking at the 500 mark, which will put us in the top 1 percent. We should be in the top five in the entire country, and they just can't believe that we have the support in the community, because units across the country are not filling the needs in their units and are closing them. So, you know, we just got great support in the city, I can't say enough. You know, we look at everything, we're all retired from the Air Force, and we've got 100 years' experience, and, and a lot of people say, "Well, why do you do it?" Say, "Well, you know what? We had a career in the Air Force, 30 years, me and the Colonel, 20 years for Sergeant Casilli and Sergeant Smith, but this is a vocation." These are our kids, even though my kids and they're all our kids, we talk about, they say, "Dad, why didn't you help me when I was a kid?" We're, we're growing up with them, and now, we're there for them. So, it's a great, it's a great thing, we're, we're just, we're happy to come to school every day. We like coming to school, think it's a great thing, get up in the morning, do the great stuff, and just thank you very much. And I know there's a press release I'm supposed to read, and I'll read their press release if I could at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
Unit MA 771 at Lowell High School has been selected to receive the 2005-2006 Air Force Junior ROTC Distinguished Unit Award. This award recognized the Air Force Junior ROTC units, they're performing above and beyond normal expectations, and that have distinguished themselves through outstanding service to their school and community while meeting the Air Force Junior ROTC mission of producing better citizens for America, and that's basically what this program is all about. The objective of the program is to educate and train high school cadets in citizenship, life skills, promote community service, instill responsibility, character, and self-discipline through education development, and to provide instruction in air and space fundamentals. Enrollment is open to all young people who are in the ninth grade or higher, physically fit, and are citizens, are nationals of the United States. We think we fit that criteria, we've got a great program, we appreciate your support, and what else can I say except, you know, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, but we're not quite finished. We do have a certificate to present to the unit in honor of that achievement, so why don't we have some of the students come forward, so I can present that certificate? Okay, and we have just a few additional presentations in connection with the program. We have Outstanding Instructor Awards for Lieutenant Colonel Robert I. Olson, U.S. Air Force, retired. We have also an Outstanding Instructor Award for Chief Master Sergeant Robert E. Jakes, U.S. Air Force, retired. And, last but certainly not least, an Outstanding Instructor Award for Master Sergeant Kevin M. Casilli, U.S. Air Force, retired. Thank you all for your service. I'd like to have you gentlemen come forward too and present these awards, accept these awards. Okay. And we've done the ceremony. Thank you all very much. To hear these levels of participation is truly remarkable. Put us in the top 1 percent in the country and the top five nationwide is certainly something I think we're all very proud of. I want to thank you for your leadership.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. And thanks for the gift. Okay, in all that excitement, we neglected to have a roll call to see who's here. So, why don't we have that?
Mr. Leahy.
Here.
Mr. Leary.
Here.
Ms. Martin.
Here.
Mr. McHugh.
Here.
Mayor Martin.
Here.
Ms. Dougherty.
Here.
Ms. Fattacante.
Here.
Seven yays, approved.
Okay, first item on the agenda is acceptance of the minutes of the regular school committee meeting of September 6, 2006. Motion to approve by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. McHugh. All those in favor say aye, any opposed, the minutes are approved. Under permission to enter, Madam Superintendent?
Yes, I have a recommendation for two contracts this evening. The first to the University of Massachusetts at Lowell, Songus Industrial History Center, $25,820, to provide courses to enrich student content understanding and skills development in the American Industrial Revolution. That's for third, seventh, eighth, and ninth grade students, funding provided by the school department budget, the admissions fees account. The second contract with Dr. Patricia Treya, $12,950, training services and peer mediation training at our middle schools for students and staff, and the funding for that contract is to be provided by the Safe and Drug-Free Schools Grant.
Mr. Leahy?
Thank you. Could I just ask a question through you to Superintendent? On the second contract, this is a great thing that we're doing, but could you just tell us what exactly the program is?
Most of our, sure, most of our middle schools are involved in a peer mediation program where, where one or more faculty members at the school works with a group of student leaders who are, who learn the skills of conflict resolution and mediating disputes that may arise among and between youngsters. So, it becomes a student leadership development program, and also a way to provide other youngsters in the school with a way to resolve, to resolve disputes in a healthy, constructive, nonviolent way.
Thank you. What's the wish of the committee? Motion approved by Mr. Leahy, seconded by Ms. Martin. Roll call, please.
Mr. Leahy.
Yes.
Mr. Leary.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. McHugh.
Yes.
Mayor Martin.
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty.
Yes.
Ms. Fattacante.
Yes.
Seven yays, approved.
Under memorials, we have three separate items offered by school committee woman Regina M. Fattacante. First for Stella Kula Harris, wife of George D. Kula Harris, former member of the Lowell School Committee. Second by, seconded, secondly, I'm sorry, Carolyn Jeremini, mother of Cheryl Hall, a teacher at the Sullivan Middle School. And third, Frances Mickey Coughlin, Lowell resident and father, father of Linda Coughlin of the Lowell Police Department. We could all rise in a moment of silence, please. May they rest in peace. Under unfinished business, we have a vote on the naming of the Library Media Center at the Sappisara School in order of Ted Rorak, former Deputy Superintendent.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is under unfinished business, because we did want Mr. Rorak to be here tonight. He fully, he full well knows his accomplishments, but I will read some of them into the record so that the committee can vote tonight to take, take the official vote this evening to name the Library Media Center at the Sappisara School in honor of former Deputy Superintendent Ted Rorak. His career started in '72, when he was a math teacher in the Lowell Public Schools. In 1980 to '85, he was assistant principal at the Bartlett School. From '85 to 2000, he established a before and after-school extended day program in a Saturday program, including a homework center and MCAS support. He supervised and evaluated 200 staff, including some pre-kindergarten, early childhood, reading, math, ESL, native language teachers. He then went on as Deputy Superintendent of the Lowell Public Schools to provide school committee with reports, including MCAS reports. I know we love to read them so much, but they are incredibly important to us, for us to understand where we're heading. Established literacy teams at elementary schools and middle school level and at high school, developed the district's comprehensive assessment plan, including implementing the Terranova Assessment. He established the district and school support teams, district curriculum steering committees, developed and implemented a unified district and school improvement plan. That is just the tip of the iceberg of the evidence that was presented before the building naming subcommittee to, in fact, name this Library Media Center after the former Deputy Superintendent. And, Your Honor, I think that the, our next order of business is for the school committee to formally take this vote.
Okay, so moved by Ms. Fattacante, seconded by Ms. Martin. Any further comment? Roll call.
Mr. Leahy.
Yes.
Mr. Leary.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. McHugh.
Yes.
Mayor Martin.
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty.
Yes.
Ms. Fattacante.
Yes.
Seven yays, approved.
I don't believe there are any items under public participation, or, Ms. Martin?
Mr. Rorak is here, if you would like, maybe, from the other side of the, other side of the railing, say a few words.
Ah, okay, I'm sorry. Mr. Rorak.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Fattacante, for those kind words, and I wish to express my sincerest thanks to the members of the school committee for this honor. I'm most humbled, and to be associated with a mentor and a friend, former Superintendent George Sappisara, and his legacy makes this truly a very special honor, and I will forever be grateful to the members of the committee. I also wish to express my sincerest thanks to all the employees in the Lowell Public Schools who I had the honor and privilege of working with. They epitomize the highest quality of professionalism, and I thank them for their support, their encouragement, and all the years that I was able to work along with them. And finally, I would like to thank my family, most importantly, for their love, their support, and their encouragement as well. And I know there's one day that I think we are all looking forward to, and that will be the groundbreaking of the George M. Sappisara School. Thank you again for this honor. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Martin?
Thank you. Certainly, we've heaped our accolades on Mr. Rorak with good reason. He's done an extraordinary job for our district, and I know we're all looking forward to the final, the retirement party coming up quite soon. I would, if I could, ask for the indulgence of my colleagues, I would like to request a suspensions of the rules, just a suspension of the rules to bring in a motion. At this point, and certainly it's still under discussion, but there are conversations going on about which schools are going to be basically closed to move into the new Sappisara School. One of them that is under consideration, certainly not finalized yet, but is under consideration, is the Varnum School, located in Senneville, and the Senneville, I'm sorry, and the Varnum School does have a named library. It is for a former teacher at the school, Ms. Margaret Colgate. I had heard, I know other members have as well, from her former colleagues, who are very passionate about the work she did in this district and the work they did in honoring her in establishing this library and establishing an endowed fund that purchased books on a regular basis, on an annual basis, for this library. What I would like to enter into the record now, as we move forward, is, I guess, basically the idea that as we get closer to making this decision, I would like this to be carefully considered if we could perhaps dedicate a reading corner, a room within the Library Media Center, to continue honoring this, this woman for the work that she did for our students here in Lowell. I would like to make that as a motion, obviously, it's something that we'll need to consider as we get much further into this process, but I would make that in the form of a motion.
Okay, so, first, on the motion to suspend the rules by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Leary. All those in favor suspending the rules say aye, any opposed, the rules are suspended, and then on the substantive motion by Ms. Martin?
Needs to be referred to the building naming subcommittee, Your Honor, and I would have appreciated the conversation to have taken place with the committee of the whole, rather than a sidebar discussion.
I think the concern was...
And it should not have been raised tonight.
Well, unfortunately, it was raised tonight, and I don't think that, I would hate to sully the, the good intentions of wanting to honor a former teacher with any kind of a debate, this is certainly well warranted, and I know as we move forward, we'll be able to continue honoring this individual with the same kind of positivity that we'll be honoring Mr. Rorak with as we move forward with the Sappisara. Thank you.
Okay, so, motion to refer the subject matter to the Subcommittee on Naming by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. McHugh. All those in favor?
Aye.
Say aye, any opposed, that motion is approved. Okay, on to the motions portion of the agenda. There are three motions pertaining to very similar subject matter, as well as a Subcommittee report. I would suggest that we entertain all of those items in one discussion. Any objections?
Your Honor, I will make a motion to take the Subcommittee report out of order.
Okay, so, so moved by Ms. Fattacante, seconded by Mr. Leary. All those in favor say aye, any opposed, so we will take that Subcommittee report first, but why don't I read that, the, the report and the motions, and then we can pursue the discussion. So, the Subcommittee report is a report of the Personnel Subcommittee, Report of Approval of Minutes of September 18, 2006, and September 19, 2006, and the motions are as follows. The first by me, request the Superintendent prepare a report outlining present policies and procedures for criminal background checks on both new hires and existing employees. Forward the report to the Personnel Subcommittee, work with the committee, city solicitor, and appropriate state agencies to modify and strengthen those policies and procedures. Seconded by Ms. Dougherty. The second motion is by Mr. Leahy, that the school committee request the Superintendent carefully reexamine all hiring policies in the school system. Request the Superintendent work with the state delegation to change any laws to ensure that the children, the Lowell schools, and the Commonwealth are protected to the fullest extent of the law. Seconded by Mr. Leary.
Aye.
And the third motion by Mr. Leary, Personnel Subcommittee and the entire school committee meet as soon as possible to review our current hiring and promotion practices and policies in order to determine if changes should be made to our current practices, if a new policy should be adopted. Seconded by Mr. McHugh. And so, all those motions are now under, on the floor for discussion, but first, the Subcommittee report, Ms. Martin.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. There are, there were actually two separate meetings of the Personnel Subcommittee, if we could, both dealing with certainly important topics, but we'll start with the meeting that had happened on September 18th. Let's see, attended by myself, by member of the Subcommittee Regina Fattacanti, and other members present were Jackie Dougherty, John Leahy, and Jim Leary, and Carla Brooks-Bear from the administration. Basically, we had called that initial Subcommittee to discuss the goals, the priority goals that the committee would set for the Superintendent in this current, this current school year. This being September, it seems like a logical time to set these goals in place, be able to publicize them, so that the community is aware of what the, what the specific goals are that we've crafted, so that we will be able to, at the conclusion of this year, during our evaluation of the Superintendent, be able to point directly at the specific goals that have been tied to the performance bonus that is built into the Superintendent's contract. This meeting was actually, at the conclusion of this meeting, after a great deal of discussion, we did charge the Superintendent with making some changes to the goals as initially presented to the, to the full committee, and indeed to the Personnel Subcommittee, and she did return at our following meeting on September 19th, the following evening, to present those priority goals. I will kind of sum them up quickly here, but they are available, obviously, as part of the written record, the, and these are not in any particular order. But the first is to provide school committee members with the information and analysis they need to make informed decisions as they work with the city, to, to give the city the information it requires to make a greater investment in the school department's facilities by implementing a short and long-term maintenance and capital plan. The second goal is to provide all school committee members with information and analysis that they need to make informed decisions as they propose to the City Council a fiscally sound FY08 budget that allocates resources effectively to make progress towards achievement of the five-year goals. The third goal is basically made up of three parts, all relating to the freshman academy, obviously a major initiative within our district. The first being 80% of first-year freshmen who complete the year will earn promotion to sophomore status, bringing it up from our current level of 75%, so a 5% increase in achievement. Secondly, 80% of the first-year freshmen who complete the year will achieve a 90% attendance rate, which would be an increase from the current rate of 72.9%. And thirdly, 75% of the students who complete the new year-long reading course for freshmen will achieve two years' growth in reading proficiency, as measured by 150-point increase in the Scholastic Reading Inventory, or the SRI test. The fourth goal, students in grades three through eight who are reading substantially below grade level will receive at least 90 minutes each week of targeted intervention, resulting in 80% moving out of the at-risk category by the end of the year, again, as measured by the Scholastic Reading Inventory test. Fifth goal is more effective implementation of teaching strategies that shelter English language learners and will result in a 35% increase of students who begin the year in the transitioning stage of English language proficiency, as measured by the statewide MEPA test, and being judged probable transitioning out of limited English proficient status, LEP, and 35% of those judged probable successfully making that transition. These goals, I think for anyone who has been tracking this, are extremely finite and concrete. I think they are tied to very specific numeric goals that we will be able to use in judging the Superintendent's success, and I think that it was, it was good work on the part, certainly of the Superintendent and the committee as a whole, to craft these goals that I think are extremely challenging, and, and I certainly, I am optimistic, hopeful, encouraged that we will be able to achieve them, certainly not because of the Superintendent, because I'd like the Superintendent to achieve them, but because they would represent such a dramatic improvement within our district. So, that would be submitted, I guess, as the first action of this Subcommittee, to approve these goals, recognizing that we will all be using them as we make our evaluation of the Superintendent at the conclusion of this year. I'd offer that to, as a motion to the committee as a whole.
Okay, motion to approve the goals as presented by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Leary. Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Leahy.
No.
Mr. Leary.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. McHugh.
Yes.
Mayor Martin.
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty.
Yes.
Ms. Fattacante.
Yes.
Six yays, one nay, approved.
Okay, and now for the, the report, does that conclude the report of the Subcommittee? Does that conclude the report of the Subcommittee?
Well, yeah, it concludes the report of the first Subcommittee, the first Personnel Subcommittee on the 18th.
Okay. So now for the second meeting.
Yes. The Personnel Subcommittee did also meet on September 19th at the School Department offices. Present were members of the Subcommittee, myself, Regina Fatacanti, and Kevin McHugh. Other members attending were Jackie Dougherty, Jim Leahy, Jim Leary, and Mayor Bill Martin. From the Administration, we had Superintendent Carla Brooks-Bear, Susan Duggins, and City Solicitor Chris Kean O'Connor. Other school staff in attendance were Attorney James Hall, interim Deputy Superintendent Jean Franco, Acting Assistant Superintendent Anne Murphy, and there were a number of other individuals from, from the UTL Union officers, as well as some media individuals, and a number of citizens who attended this Subcommittee as well. And I would like to thank them all for their interest, and I think for their great suggestions and questions as we went through this process. Obviously, what has predicated this Subcommittee meeting and the topic that was discussed is of profound concern to every member of this Committee, and really, not to put too fine a point on it, but every member of this community. There have been certain incidents that have taken place that have caused us, I think, to question, in a very real way, the safety of our children within our schools, and at the end of the day, we make, this Committee makes, this Administration makes, takes on a, certainly a number of different jobs, a number of different responsibilities in implementing the public school agenda within this city. I think first and foremost, and there is, I know, no debate about this, the single most important thing we need to ensure is the safety of children in our schools. There is nothing else that supersedes that, there is nothing else that can replace that, and it is without question the truly sacred trust that we take on with our community. When we ask them to send us their children, we make that commitment, that we will educate, that we will enlighten, that we will do all of those intellectual endeavors, but none of that can happen if we are not functioning in an absolutely safe and secure environment. There is a, certainly, and I will only speak for myself in this, a very emotional reaction to, to the happenings that we've seen, I think that, that I found it particularly jarring and troubling that, as we looked at the safety systems that we had in place, that they did not work, and that this situation has happened is really the true testament to that, that the safeguards that we relied on simply do not, do not work well enough. During the course of our Subcommittee meeting, you know, we were limited to talking about policies and procedures around background checks, that was our topic. I think we focused on it, and I think in a very productive way. I think that there are certainly two aspects of this. I mean, one of it is that we want to, you know, we have relied the industry standard for public school districts, for any organizations working with children, or elders for that matter, the query system, criminal offender record information, too many acronyms in the world, but that query system is something that we all rely on, again, as the industry standard. We're told, this is what you do, and that is supposed to keep us, keep us safe and to inform our decisions in a, in a good way. I think one of the most upsetting things I heard during the course of the Subcommittee meeting was from the Chief of Police here in Lowell, Chief Ed Davis, describing that, you know, query checks are not a hundred percent, that they can be different when they're run within a week of each other, and as, as I had said last evening, if they're not a hundred percent, then they're useless. There's really nothing that, you know, to, there's no percentage other than a hundred that can be deemed appropriate if we're going to rely on this in our decision-making. So there are two charges to us, well, a number of them, but in regards to the query system, we have the opportunity, first off, to, in the long term, work with our delegation to improve the, to improve the established query system here in the state of Massachusetts that includes accessing the federal, federal query system, and that was a motion made by Kevin McHugh, seconded by Regina Fatacanti during the Subcommittee meeting, to ask the Superintendent to send a letter to our State delegation urging them to secure, I know a lot of us have been hearing this, the thirty thousand dollar appropriation so that the Commonwealth of Massachusetts as a whole can gain access to the national query system for its public employers. I think that that's, that was certainly a first step. I also think that, as we talked about it, we need immediate solutions, one of which was suggested by a member of the community who was in attendance, who had brought up the option of, immediately, we can begin doing query checks from other states, accessing the states that are contiguous here to Massachusetts, I think most notably, New Hampshire is the one that would most be impacted, for, for our employees who live in that, who live in Mass, who live in New Hampshire, rather, so that we can be assured that even in the short term, we're going to be tightening up this, this process. We had certainly a very free-ranging discussion, I think. A lot of the discussion also focused on who has access currently to the query information, which I think has been too limited. I think we will be continuing to discuss which specific individuals within our district should have access to it. I think there was, there was agreement on the, on the side of the, the School Committee that it should be expanded so that our principals have access to query information so that they can see the actual reports, and I think that as we talk about whether we want to expand it even to ourselves as, as a School Committee, in a limited sense, because we could certainly only use it in very specific cases, but wanting to make these decisions as part of a comprehensive move to change our, our background check process, really in developing it into a handbook of, of procedures that we implement each and every time we do a hire at any level within our district. There's so much in this report, so I'm trying not to take too terribly long. The other specific motions that were taken, again, a motion by Kevin McHugh, seconded by Regina Fatacanti, we voted to recommend to the Committee as a whole that the Superintendent continue to work with the City Solicitor's Office to develop language that can be inserted into all hiring applications, that specifically ask if an employee has ever been convicted of a crime, requiring them to disclose what that crime was, to disclose any subsequent conviction under that, and asking the applicant to sign their application statement under the pains and penalties of perjury, with the, being clear that if, you know, failure to disclose any kind of information from their background would be grounds for immediate termination in the future. So that was the, I guess, third, third motion of the Subcommittee. Regina Fatacanti had made a motion, seconded by Mr. McHugh, to recommend to the Committee as a whole that the Superintendent and City Solicitor develop a draft of a comprehensive hiring policy for review by the Personnel Subcommittee that takes into account district standards set by the School Committee. Again, as we, as I said previously, the idea of developing a more comprehensive set of procedures that the Committee itself will be able to dictate benchmarks. I think one of the things that would greatly improve this process is some standardization. When we talk about there needing to be some judgment made, I think that we can be very clear as to where those lines are drawn. I think from the perspective of the, of the Committee, as we were in discussion about this, I think that any time we see something on a query, regardless of when or where it happened, we need to be able to do a secondary review of that, of whether it's a single incident, and certainly if it's a pattern. One of the items that Member Fatacanti had brought up was that we do have access to investigators that we could use to ensure that we are getting absolutely accurate and more detailed substantive information. There could be situations where there is past transgression that, with the help of a professional investigator, we could talk with, we talk with witnesses, talk with probation officers, determine and, and get a real picture of what it is we're, we're facing. So I think that that was an exceptional idea for us to be able to build into this overall process, the idea that the Committee can really set the, set the bar where we feel comfortable, so that this decision is standardized and there is not, it will certainly limit the, the concerns in the future. So that was that motion. Also a motion made by Regina Fatacanti, seconded by Mr. McHugh, that, beginning immediately, the Superintendent begin the process of conducting those out-of-state criminal background checks, as I had referenced before, that came out of a comment made by one of the community members who had attended the meeting, and was certainly welcomed by the, by the Subcommittee as an idea as we move forward. I think that there are, I think that this is certainly the beginning of this process. I think that we have been shown a very big hole in our, in our safety net, and we need to respond dramatically and with great energy to, to close this, because there's simply no other option for us. There is nothing else to be done but to change our system to ensure the safety of the students in our charge. My only other comment would be is that this is really, and I had said it last night as well, this is the first conversation on these topics. Personnel Subcommittee will be meeting on this a number of other times. We will be endeavoring to hold some additional meetings regarding the, the actual actions taken during this, during this process, so that we can evaluate decision-making. I would like to say that, you know, again, we're working very closely with the City Solicitor to ensure that we are staying within the confines of the law, because, again, like any other responsibility we hold, we do, we are held accountable for our actions in terms of what the law says. So, I think that we are doing everything we can to respond to this as dramatically as we can, and I think there can be no question that every member of this Committee is extremely upset about this whole, this whole situation, and is one hundred percent committed to ensuring that it never happens again. Again, as I said last night, I would absolutely encourage all the other members to share their, their personal reactions, some thoughts.
Thank you. Ms. Fatacante?
Thank you, Your Honor. Because I'm going to be far more calm tonight, do not allow anybody here to think that I'm any less angry than I was a week and a half ago. The bottom line, I think, that I did not hear last night, and what prompts me to make these remarks today, is that I never, I heard my colleagues accept responsibility for this. I heard you, Your Honor, accept some responsibility. I heard each and every person that sits along this row with me accept responsibility, but I never heard any acceptance of responsibility from the Administration. And ultimately, the responsibility lies with the Administration. I saw the Dog and Pony Show, I was very impressed with all of the documents that we received, very impressed. The City Solicitor was brought out to discuss the, the items that she had prepared for us, and I saw a lot of finger pointing, and I saw a lot of blaming of the policy, and again, I never saw any acceptance of the responsibility that we had information, we chose to ignore the information. And, Your Honor, the only thing I could say to the Superintendent the other day, and I've repeatedly said to my colleagues, that if we were hiring this person to be a security guard or a custodian, not to belittle those, those job performances at all, but if we were hiring a person in that capability, that query would have been looked at, and that hiring most probably would have been negated, or they would not have been promoted. So I have to ask myself, how in the world did it happen here? And why? Why did it happen here? And because I didn't get a lot of clear answers last night, I still have to say that I have a crisis of confidence, confidence in that we are doing everything possible to maintain the safety and the security of our youngsters when we hire people. The query came back with information that we clearly should have looked at and should have raised a red flag, and I recognize that we do not have some clear-cut policies, but again, I have to rely on my belief that if this were another hiring, it would never have got off the ground, it would never have been, this person would never have been allowed to accept another position, because we would have had that information. I, and because little information last night was given to the School Committee, I still have to think there is more this Committee should know, and it won't know because of our current policy. Now, I have a Chapter 71 here, Your Honor, Section 38, which clearly indicates that School Committees are entitled to receive information of this kinds of matter, and I would expect that our Assistant Superintendent of Personnel would have conveyed the information to our Superintendent, that she should have come to us looking for some policy clarification. And when none of that happened, I have to say to myself, how come? It concerns me greatly. Ms. Martin has indicated that we're going to, that this is the one in, in a number of meetings that we're going to have, because my colleagues raised concerns last night, and Mr. Leary, Mr. Leahy have motions on the agenda which concern the hiring practice that allowed this person to, to ascend to a higher position, when in fact, our policies dictated that he probably shouldn't have. And again, I have to ask myself, why? So I, I ultimately have to say that I have a crisis in the confidence in Administration. I realized I was calm last night, and I'm calm today, but I am no less angry in what happened, in that I, I also have to sit here and say again, I highly respect my colleagues last night because they completely accepted responsibility, they were very willing to lay the books open, have, have it explained to us what happened, and that still didn't happen. I still do not have all the answers, and my concern is that I won't have all the answers, and I don't know what the next step should be. I know that we're going to have lots more meetings about this, I know that we're going to create a policy about this, Your Honor, but unfortunately, the policy is not going to apply to the present crisis, and I think that, I think, I think my colleagues and I need to sit and have a clear, definitive, concrete idea on how we're going to treat Administration regarding this current crisis, not considering future actions, this current crisis. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Martin?
If I could just respond to that specific, I absolutely agree with you, and I think that it was the idea of the Subcommittee that we do want to have a future meeting on the specifics of this, of this situation for the individuals involved in it from beginning to end, and I think that it is something that will happen with the, my goal, my plan is to have it happen within the Personnel Subcommittee, that it will need to be, my understanding is that we do have to check on the, the appropriate notice requirements, talk with the City Solicitor as to how we can approach that, but I, I mean, I, I don't think you could find a better phrase than crisis of confidence. I think that is absolutely where we all are, and I think that part of how we need to respond to this, you know, we can't move forward until we look back. I absolutely agree with you, that, that's where, and that's where I would anticipate that happening, that we will have, be able to have that conversation, again, in accordance with the, the recommendations of legal counsel, but I think it should be an extremely open discussion about the specifics of, of what we're facing.
Thank you. Mr. McHugh?
Thank you. I guess I, too, went to last night's meeting looking to get answers about the situation, and I, I think I, I had the same frustration. I gathered, what I got was a presentation, some what we can and what we can't do from the City Solicitor, which was good advice and kind of steered the conversation or the meeting into, I think, a proactive approach to, what do we need to do as a body to rectify this situation? I don't think we did get any answers other than a very generic outline of a timeline of events. We still don't know who had what information, what decisions were made, and based upon that, and I've still asked the question, it appears that some, there was no information, then there was some information... then there was some information and based on that information, somebody made the determination that it was okay to continue to keep this man employed. Where at that point, I would ask the question, why? What review was done at that point? Who was notified? Who made that decision? And we don't have all those answers. And I too believe this isn't over. I think we will be having other meetings to discuss this and talk about this because I too walked out of that meeting at the end of the night after almost three hours and said, do I know any more about the situation? No. The only thing I know is the information I was gathered and we took some motions and took steps to start to, I think, immediately correct the situation from our standpoint. I mean, I have to tell you, I, today I got some information online. February 17th, 2003, Department of Education advisory on the new query law. It's an eight-page document that I printed out and I have to tell you, they gave an advisory that obviously went out to all school districts and it talks about the decision to terminate somebody or not hire somebody based upon a query. And it gives a recommended process that you need to work with your school's legal counsel to develop that. And I have to sit here and say, well, did we ever read this? Did we ask those questions? Did we look at our current system to make sure that it's accurate? I was also surprised last night to find out that our superintendent has no authorization to look at queries. I think that if the Personnel Director is the one making these decisions, if there is a question mark, there should be somebody else to meet with to bounce this off. Ultimately, I mean, we, the superintendent works for us, I would say it should be the superintendent. So if there was a gray area, it's his or her decision to make that final decision. I think we have changes. I mean, I pulled the copy of the, as Ms. Fattacani stated, Chapter 71 too, and it says, "The school committee shall, shall have access to it." So I mean, we have the right, I believe, to get this information. Now, I think there's a technicality here that we have to put our names in or have the chair or somebody put their name in to have that right, but that's not the impression I got from the city solicitor last night. I got that only one or two people should be the person and it's usually directed to the HR person or the superintendent or a principal or something else. I think that, I want to be clear that I think that this is something that, there's a process. I'd rather follow this process and let them reject us at that point, if that's the case, if there's an issue there, but then we can use the law as a, as our answer back. So I think in doing some research that we, this review should have taken place at some point, especially back in 2003 when there was a revamping of the whole system and how people need to do it. And someone should have came to the committee, I would expect our administration to be proactive to come back to us and say, you know what, the law is changing, we need to do the following items. We need to look at this, we need to redraft our policy, we need to look at steps to ensure. It also mentions in the query regulations that very clearly, it only looks at Massachusetts. And it talks about in there, if you're a neighboring state, it gives you another website to go to to get the other available information. Now, is there a fee for that? Possibly, but we're talking about the safety of our children and, you know, being a parent, I can't imagine that. Luckily, nothing happened and I guess that's the, if we have a silver lining, and I hate to use that, but I think that nothing happened and thank God for that. But we should be looking at this, and then last night, that was one of my questions, the application process, that's why I asked, at least we got that information, not one application asks a question about the person's past. And that was why I brought that motion up at the meeting last night, to ask the basic question to the city solicitor, what can we legally ask? And I want to push the envelope as far as possible on that. And I, it should also have a qualifying statement to say, should you ever get convicted of a crime in the, after your employment or something in a policy manual or something they must sign, that you will notify us, not wait for the next query to catch up. So if someone gets arrested and gets, they need to notify us that so we can at least be aware of it, address it, walk through the situation because I, how many, the good news is we're at least doing them every three years, but how many other people slip through the cracks? That may have got, I think that was the whole idea, the revamping of the policy from the state standpoint, you think about it, someone could have got hired as 22, 23 years as a teacher and have a problem at 45, 40, and you would never know about it. If it wasn't locally, published locally and it be on their query record, but since it was never done, so I think that was the whole revamping for that reason, which I applaud them for, but we still got to be looking and have that strong language on our applications because I believe if this situation happened and those questions were answered inappropriately and he said no, you have, you have, right then and there, you can terminate the person. There's no questions, there is no paid administrative leave and waiting for a conviction. It is automatic, see you later, thank you very much. Those are the steps that we have to take and I guess we're coming up with them and I would expect our administration to be bringing those to us. We shouldn't be having to ask those questions. And even the question of, I asked, what other databases exist? And I think it spun off into the idea of, you know, maybe we need to have somebody actually go, go out and visit people and talk to witnesses to really get a sense, to make sure we do our due diligence, but if there are other databases out there, even if it's a fee, I don't care. Let's cross-reference, let's not just rely on one database which is coming to us that it's inaccurate, it's not reliable. The police chief is telling us, it's not reliable. One day you might get something, the next day you might get a clean one. That is not the answer any parent wants to hear. So I think a lot of steps, there's still a lot of work to do here. I don't think this is over. I think we have to do some more investigation and we have to get some answers because this is a, is a serious matter, I believe, and I think I walked away last night with the same questions I walked in with. And the only thing I walked out of there at is at least the committee has made some decisions to push this and revamp this. And I wish in the future that our administration is constantly reviewing their policies and procedures and bringing these advisories to us that they see and making recommendations that we need to meet to discuss and improve and revamp policies as we need to. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, Your Honor. I guess I'd like to start with a comment that we live in very troubling times. We don't know who we can trust our children with, whether it's our neighbor, our parish priest, the uncle, the teacher in school. And our personnel office is the gatekeepers of safety for our children in the schools. So it is our responsibility to do everything possible to make sure, as much as we can, that the adults we have in the schools with our children are responsible, safe adults. That being said, I think this issue is multi-leveled. There's several different facets of it that I'd like to address. The first one goes back to my colleague's report on the Personnel Subcommittee meeting last night. I think that looking at the policy, looking at the changes we need to make, developing processes and looking at being able to get information on out-of-state convictions, expanding authorizations on our, in terms of who has the ability to look at query checks, having more information on applications for employment, these are all very important steps that we absolutely have to make as we go forward. But it's only one piece of this issue. The second piece that's been alluded to tonight is the reliability of the query checks. I mean, when we looked at what we got for information last night from the school department, two out of three checks came back blank. Two out of three checks on this one individual said there was no record of conviction. I spoke with Chief Davis myself this morning. I found a certain amount of incredibility about that factor and he said, well, I'd have to know more about it, what were the dates? And I could tell him the dates, that those two checks were in 2003. He said that it is possible that that could have happened three years ago, but in his understanding, his experience with query checks, they're much more reliable now. Well, that's, hopefully, we can get some comfort from that, but it's not enough for me to just have somebody say, I think they're better now. I think we really need to look at how reliable and if it's not reliable, what else we can do to elevate this issue to the awareness of our state legislatures on stuff that's already been talked about tonight, such as the out-of-state information that we currently do not have access to. But then there's the third piece. And this goes to the administration responsibility in this whole issue. And certainly, I don't want to stand here and create an atmosphere of fear in the administration. That's not my intention. But I feel very strongly about the issue of accountability. We're asking students, you're accountable, show up, do the work. We're asking teachers, you're accountable, you're accountable to be the guidance providers, to educators of these children. We're asking principals, be accountable for the learning and the safety and the discipline that happens in your schools. And we have to say the same to our administrators from the top down. And I think when we look at this situation that there was only one administrator who had the access, who had the authority, even though as the documentation Mr. McHugh brought in shows, clearly, the superintendent should have had that authorization as well, that that continued for, well, at least under your tenure, right, Madam Superintendent, for the last six years, that you had one person making these decisions without being able to bounce ideas or concerns off somebody else. I mean, I do that myself. I think we all do. When you're making important decisions, you need to be able to discuss it with somebody else. I think that really was an unfair burden to place on one person. That being said, I think it was also very bad judgment to not identify that this particular candidate had a red flag, a very bright red flag, even though we found out late in the process, he still had not received professional status. And then, six months after that information came to light, that that particular employee was promoted under what's now come out to be other dubious circumstances, I think is really a failing that we need to address. And I don't think just talking about it in Personnel Executive Committee is really even enough. So I'd like to bring forward to this committee an idea, suggestion. Earlier this evening, my colleague, Mr. Leary and I happened to be speaking with State Senator Steve Panagiotakis, and I brought this issue up to the Senator. My concern is that it wasn't something we could really handle within the confines of this committee because we have been told by the city solicitor that we do not have right, the privy to that prior information, those early query checks. And that for us to just try to handle it within the confines of this committee would be limiting for us. So I threw this out to the Senator. What did he think? He suggested putting together some kind of independent review that would include somebody from the query board, but they would not be the ones doing the review because they're not objective either. I mean, their position will be, we do absolutely accurate, provide accurate information. They're not going to be as open to looking at what are some of the nuances of what happened. So I think it speaks to your motion, Your Honor, about putting down in writing what were the procedures and the practices that the school department went through in doing these query checks and the decisions that went in place and providing that as a stepping start, a starting point, where we then have other people who, the Senator, the way we left it tonight was that he would think about it and get in touch with the committee. Obviously, we need the, I'm asking for your support in looking at approaching it this way to kind of help us review what actually happened. Because I think as we go forward, we definitely need to make those changes. We definitely need to come up with a clear process. But we also need to look at, you know, where it went wrong with this particular case. And, you know, I'd like to leave on what I consider a somewhat positive note, which I think it's been alluded to earlier, that if this instance, this case has enabled us to see what changes we have to make and we're able to move forward on that, I think that that's a positive outcome from this situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Leary?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to compliment the entire committee. We really are going to take this very seriously. I want to make sure the public understands, under no circumstances is this going to be swept under the rug. Every committee person, you know, to a person, this is something we take very, very important. My colleague, Committee Woman Doherty, and I did speak with the Senator and one thing that he said he would be doing tomorrow was contacting the query board to really help get some of that information that the city solicitor had, was challenged with. And that really is, really statistics of how effective is the queries, finding, actually get a good dialogue with that query board. So that's something that the state senator will take initiative with us. The biggest troubling part last night for me in terms of finding information, the frustrating part, was we weren't allowed to look at the queries or examine a lot of the information. And I think what Committee Woman Doherty and I was, and I don't want to put words into her mouth, but what I believe in this area, if we're not allowed to do diagnoses of what actually happened, then we may need to go outside and get an independent body, be it the state auditor or whatever, to do that analysis. I think the committee acknowledges its responsibility. As Committee Woman Fattacani clearly stated, we accept responsibility for the policy and we will ensure that there's a policy. We will rectify any ambiguity that's out there at this point in time. But as we're doing this, we make, we need, we must ensure that we knew exactly where the problem occurred. And if we are not able to do that for whatever particular reason, under the Massachusetts general laws, what have you, then we will have to go outside and get independent agencies to do it. Now, I'm not making that as a frame of emotion at this point in time because as, as the chairman of the Personnel Subcommittee clearly stated, this is very far from being over. This is just the beginning. Part of solving the problem sometimes is a little bit painful, okay? Madam Superintendent, I have complete faith in you as the CEO of this, of our school department. However, in circumstances where there's, it's ambiguous or circumstances where we clearly don't have a complete idea as a committee, we need to do a diagnoses from the beginning, what actually happened. And that might be somewhat painful to some individuals. I, for one, know folks make mistakes. I'm not trying to say to anybody, your job is going to be in jeopardy for making an honest, legitimate mistake. However, to sweep this under the rug and not understand completely what occurred is unacceptable. So if the committee can't do it, in my opinion, we'll have to go outside to do it. Before we rush things in that area, we need to do this in a thoughtful, respectful manner. And I think what the committee chairman of the Personnel Subcommittee is doing by having, I think the meeting is next week actually, is bringing this slowly and meticulously forward. First, address the issue about the query problem. We have to ensure that the crisis of confidence, that there is confidence for the students and for the parents in the City of Lowell. And I think with the steps we initially have taken, the steps we will be taking, in addition with the help from our, from our state delegation, we'll ensure that occurs. Second, we have to look at our hiring practices. We need to ensure we develop a specific policy. And part of that policy, in my opinion, and it's going to be more comprehensive than just what I'm stating tonight, is really taking the superintendent and perhaps one of our attorneys, I'll name one I know, Michael Ortiz, and having him in addition to the HR Assistant Superintendent, really being part of looking at the queries as they come in or making judgment calls on anything that might be in a gray area. You know, I know, I don't know Attorney Ortiz personally, but I know he has experience in the district attorney's office. So using his expertise in this area in addition to your expertise, along with the HR department, would be beneficial. There's other areas we need to touch base in regard to our hiring practices. The third area, which I think is equally important, is promotion policies. I'm the newest committee member here. If there's a policy that's been circumvented, violated, ignored, we need to find out when that occurred, if it occurred, and why it occurred. And we need to address that with the full authority of the committee in a respectful and thoughtful manner. And that's something I think, unfortunately, this process is not going to be, you know, lightning quick in terms of diagnosing how it occurred and actually solving the problem. But rest assured, and as the public, as it was said last night, for those of you that didn't see that Subcommittee meeting, we are going to go through this slowly, moving efficiently as we can in areas to protect your children. And there will be no stone unturned. And if there's areas where we don't have the authority, I, for one, and I think the committee would really agree with it, we'll go outside to get that information so we can ensure that your children are safe in the Lowell schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Leahy?
Thank you. When this first surfaced, I, like many parents, were very concerned. What I took from last night's Subcommittee meeting is that, I thought it was very, I got information from that meeting. I don't mean to disagree with my colleagues. There are more questions, there are a lot more questions that need to be answered. But I did get some basic information out of that meeting and what I got was that we followed the regulations that we're supposed to follow. They're not strict enough. That's the problem. That's the problem. People do have rights, whether we like it or not. This person isn't even, we're all innocent until proven guilty. But these allegations are very serious, and it will be taken very serious by this school There's a number of things we need to look at. We need to look at the quarry, the quarry process. We need to look at who has access. Chapter 71, Section 38R, it's going to be interpreted, the interpretation is different the way I read it from the interpretation I got last night. One of the biggest problems is that there should be more people in our school department who can look at these. It's unfair to lay it on three people in the whole school department, in a system this big. I think, I'm not here to defend anybody, but I think we did follow guidelines. The guidelines are not enough. These things, these things happen. There was just a case in another school district. It could have been a city employee. This isn't good for the school department, but it could happen anywhere. It does happen. We need to address it. We need to work together with the city, with our state delegation, with the community. And we need to come together with, with strong, thoughtful, and very, we need to be decisive on this. But we don't need knee-jerk reaction. Everybody's angry. They're rightfully so. I'm angry about what happened. But we will investigate that. Decisions will be made on what action should be taken at another time. But what I, what I see happening is that this is going to make us a better and stronger community, but I really hate to alarm anybody now. Our schools are safe. We have our problems. This particular problem arose. We need to find out what can, what are our rights when we find out? This person passed the quarry check, they were in our hire, and then something came back on a new quarry check. Other troubling, other troubling, the situation that was troubling to me is that this person got promoted afterwards. And then I find out that we don't even follow our own policies. And that's the problem with this. We have policies set up, yet sometimes we say the norm is to, you know, let it go, let it slide by, and that's wrong. I think we need to review our policies, no matter how much time it takes, how much money, how much effort. We need to hire somebody tomorrow to start looking at some of these policies. Make sure that we're following. Make sure that they're update, updated. I know, as my colleague said, we are angry about this. We will solve it with the help of everybody here, with the city, with the state delegation. But we do need to be fair and considerate of all involved, and then the appropriate action will be taken. I guess that's all I have to say. Everybody really said a lot tonight. There's a lot more, a lot more reading that we need to do. The information, some of the information we got tonight, we need to go through that. So I would just like to leave, you know, leave it that most of the parents that I've talked to at our schools, I would like them to know that your kids are safe in our school system. These things happen, and we're not going to take it lightly. We're going to take quick action to solve this problem, and we'll, and the other, one other thing I did want to mention, too, is maybe we should make a motion for Subcommittee's of this nature to be televised. People do want to see what's going on. It's a, it's very important, and maybe this warrants that this be at regular meetings and be televised, just to assure the public that we are taking all action that we can on this and the appropriate action. So that's all I have to say at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Leahy, would you mind coming up? I have some remarks I want to make, too. Chair recognizes the mayor.
Thank you. I think a number of members have made some very valid points here, and I think, at least from my point of view, and I think everybody would agree, we start first and foremost with, with safety of the children. Everything else we're trying to achieve goes out the window if people feel their children aren't safe. And so I think Mr. Leahy's comments earlier, that he believes that our school system is safe for children, I think was important to be said. I couldn't agree more. I know not all of us, but a number of us have children in the Lowell public schools, and I don't think we would send them there today, or tomorrow, or any day if we didn't think they were safe. So I think that's important to be said. I agree completely. But certainly, we need to make the system as safe as it can be. And clearly, there are holes in our procedures. I think, you know, some things have been said about good decisions. I think we need good information to make good decisions, whether it's hiring or otherwise. And certainly, we didn't have the best information we could have in, in this particular case, which, you know, leads you to have questions about other decisions that are made, and whether we have the best information available. Now, a lot has been said about the quarry system, and how it may have been deficient and is better today, but it certainly leaves doubts. And so I don't think we should be relying completely on that system. It seems to me, a decision, at least in administrative practice, has been, you make a judgment on this person, this is the person we want to hire, we do a criminal background check, and if that comes back without issue, the person gets a green light and goes ahead. If not, it's a stop and goes away. And not all decisions maybe are that black and white. There may be other, and I think a criminal background check on a person is only one indicator, I think, if they're going to be a person who's appropriate to be working with children. Certainly, it's not helpful to be convicted, but I can envision easily situations where people don't have criminal records or criminal convictions that may not be appropriate to be working with children. And so I think, you know, even, and I think that's a tool, and the quarry tool is, is one thing that's available to us. It hasn't worked well, at least in the, in the issue of the case under discussion, but I think we need to look beyond that. There is some talk last night, and again tonight, about investigators. Where appropriate, I think, is something that we should seriously look at. I think we need to, to know what's in a person's background that may make them appropriate or inappropriate to be working with children. It may not all be completely revealed by the fact that they were convicted of a crime 15 years earlier that might not have anything to do with this, working with the safety of children. If you're, had multiple traffic offenses, you know, and, and some people do get jail time for that, and, and serious criminal consequences, might not be all that leading an indicator, whether somebody should be a math teacher or not. Might be a very good indicator that they shouldn't be a bus driver. So there's going to be different criteria for different positions, and it's simply that to go to a state computerized system which has flaws and make that the sole determining factor of our background checks on people is not sufficient. And I think that's become painfully obvious in this case. You know, reference checks, I'm sure we do those, but we could probably do them better. Was really struck last night by the resources available, made available to police officers when they're hiring new police officers. You know, when they see a crime, or a conviction, or an arrest, sometimes they can do an investigation, talk to the people involved, get a better sense. I get the impression, we don't do that. We may not have the right or the ability to do that. And so I do think we need to work with others. I think State Department of Education guidelines have been seriously lacking to us in this area. I think that's something that, this needs to be, this is a statewide issue. It happened here in Lowell, and we need to improve it here in Lowell. But like so many other things we do in Lowell, we're a model for the rest of the state and the nation, and I think this is a perfect opportunity for us to become a model here. So that's, I think most of the committee members have made very valid points. All I really wanted to add was, we need to look beyond the simple switch on, a switch off, if somebody has a criminal conviction or a criminal record in their past. It may be a good indicator in certain cases, but it may not be enough information in others. So it's one thing we're going to have to look at, but I think this needs a much more broader approach. If we're not getting cooperation from other agencies, certainly independent reviews can be helpful, and I certainly wouldn't be opposed to those sorts of things, but I think we should start here in-house with our own review, and where we run into roadblocks, seek assistance from state agencies that can help us make better decisions on who's going to work with our children. So I appreciate everybody's comments. I appreciate the seriousness of this issue. Everybody, I think, is gravely concerned that somebody who has serious accusations of, you know, of molesting children gets hired in a system. And it shouldn't happen. We can't let it happen, and we need to do a better job at this issue. I'm confident that we will. Thank you.
Okay, there are a number, Ms. Martin?
The committee as a whole, I believe, needs to take action on the motions from the Subcommittee report. If we want to take them in total, I can just say, one is that we are going to urge the state delegation to secure the $30 appropriation for the national quarry system. We're going to introduce, the second is that we're going to introduce language into our application, requiring people to self-disclose any past criminal convictions or, or accusations under pains, pains and penalties of perjury. Third is that we begin the process immediately and quickly to develop a comprehensive hiring policy that the Personnel Subcommittee and the committee as a whole will review. Fourth, that the superintendent will begin immediately conducting out-of-state criminal background checks. And I believe those are the four motions that stand, that were passed by the Subcommittee last evening, and I would put them forth in a form of, I guess, one joint motion for the full committee to...
Motion to approve those motions recommended by the Subcommittee by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. McHugh. Roll call, please.
Mr. Leahy.
Yes.
Mr. Larry.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. McHugh.
Yes.
Mayor Martin.
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty.
Yes.
Ms. Fatakanti.
Yes.
Seven yays, all four approved.
Okay. And on the, the three motions, any objection to considering those under one vote? Will we do that?
We want to accept the Subcommittee report as you...
Okay. First, on the two Subcommittee reports, motion to accept both as reports of progress and in place and filed by Mr. McHugh, seconded by Ms. Martin. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Those motion, that Subcommittee report is now approved. And on the motions by myself, Mr. Leahy, and Mr. Leary, roll call to approve those three motions.
Okay. Mr. Leahy.
Yes.
Mr. Larry.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. McHugh.
Yes.
Mayor Martin.
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty.
Yes.
Ms. Fatakanti.
Yes.
Seven yays, all three motions approved.
Okay. The next motion on the agenda is by Mr. Leary, that the Lowell headmaster provide for the Lowell High School Subcommittee the current detailed organization chart for the September 25th Subcommittee meeting, seconded by Ms., Mr. Leahy, Mr. Leary.
Just real quick, this, I think, I don't have an organizational chart of the Lowell High School. I'm not sure anybody does, besides maybe the headmaster. We need an updated, detailed one at this point, and it probably should be made to the whole committee, not just to the Lowell High School Subcommittee. Thank you.
Okay. All those in favor, the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is approved. Next motion by Mr. Leahy, request the appropriate Subcommittee review our current policy on the use of cell phones by students, seconded by...
Second that, Your Honor.
Ms. Fatakanti, Mr. Leahy.
Thank you. I would just like to review the policy for students. I'm sorry that I missed this this summer when we went over this, but I do think it's important that students are able to bring a cellphone, and as long as it's put away during the day and put in their locker, or whatever, there's no harm in letting them have them before school and after school for safety, family reasons, whatever. So I would ask that we send this to the committee to review it and possibly change the current policy. Thank you.
All those in favor, the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is approved. Next motion is by Ms. Martin, requesting a report from the superintendent on the per diem payments made over the course of FY06 and anticipated expenditures for FY07 to Lowell Public Schools' teaching and administrative staff, also included should be any recommendations for reducing this expense in the current fiscal year.
I'll second that, Your Honor.
Seconded by Ms. Fatakanti, Ms. Martin.
Thank you very much. I'm really just looking for information so that we can start making some informed decisions about this, this issue. Obviously, you know, throughout our district, we have individuals who work on various years. You know, our teachers are working 181 days. Administrators work a variety of different schedules, some, you know, some at that same 181, some stretching up to 220. And what happens, I know in a lot of cases, is that the work mandates requires that they come in, perhaps during a summer vacation, because that's what the job requires, and that there are per diem payments made to cover that time. That's over and above the, their standard salary. To be honest, I don't have a strong sense of how often it happens. It's something that I think we, but it is something that I think we need to start tracking. True of administrators, certainly true for, for teachers as well. I just think, I would like to start getting a handle on exactly what kind of numbers we're talking. I would also like to be clear that I'm also looking for grant-funded positions in this report, so not simply your local-funded budget salary items, but also all of the grants that we have in place, so that we can start making some recommendations. And I would certainly welcome recommendations for ways to reduce this expense in this current fiscal year, and certainly moving forward. It's one of those, I think, hidden costs within our budget that we need to, one of those many areas we need to pay closer attention to. So I thank you very much. Might want to, just in terms of where it's going to go, I would probably recommend the Finance Subcommittee, but if there are other interests, that'd be fine.
Right. Thank you. Mr. Leahy.
Thank you. If the maker of the motion doesn't mind, I'd also like to include in the discussion that maybe some, some of these trips, the convention and conference requests, maybe we don't have to go to them every year. Maybe it can be a every other year type event. I don't know how people feel about that, but I'm sure it needs to be looked at, and some of these conferences, I don't think we need to go every year to them. So maybe we could save money that way, and if you feel that ties in with your motion, we could discuss that also.
I have no problem amending the motion.
If, Your Honor, to the, to Mr. Leahy, are you talking about the conferences that staff members, especially ones that the school departments are paying for?
Right. And when you look at them, maybe we don't have to go every year to the same conference every year, every, you know, it all adds up in the end.
So it's a motion to amend...
Yes.
...by Mr. Leahy, seconded by Ms. Fatakanti. All those in favor, the motion is amended, say aye. Any opposed? Motion is approved. No further Subcommittee reports under reports of the superintendent. First item, schools designated as in need of improvement. Madam Superintendent.
Yes, committee members have on their desks a, a brief update on schools designated as, by the Department of Education, as in need of improvement. Little bit of information attached to it. I want to just indicate that, that schools are identified now by the Department of Education in September of each year as being in need of improvement for, for, for the following reasons. If for two or more years, the MCAS scores in math and/or reading English Language Arts for the... for the, all the students or just for subgroups fail to reach the target set by the Massachusetts Department of Education, the target is a rising number, because by the end of, by 2014, No Child Left Behind requires that every student in every school reach proficiency. Massachusetts has defined proficiency as a score of two-hundred-and-forty on the MCAS. Two-hundred-and-twenty is the score for passing, for graduation, but two-forty is the score that defines proficiency. It's the highest standard in the country. And the expectation is that eventually every youngster will reach there, and the state has set escalating targets. So if we're here in Lowell, we have the good news that the Washington School, which had been designated last year as a school in need of improvement, was one of nine schools that, whose MCAS results for 2006 move it out of that category, and so it's no longer considered a school in need of improvement. So that's good news. The bad news is that there's been a fifty percent increase in the number of schools in the Commonwealth designated as in need of improvement. That's two-hundred-and-fifty-four schools have been added to the list, some of those are in Lowell. So that in Lowell, we have thirteen of our schools identified in need of improvement because of aggregate scores in mathematics, and eight of our twenty-three schools designated for, in need of improvement because of aggregate, that is the total score, in reading English Language Arts. So it now includes, that this list from the state now includes approximately one-third of all the schools in the Commonwealth. There is an estimate that approximately three-quarters of all schools will be included on this list before No Child Left Behind is done. The schools currently on the list in Massachusetts are most often urban and rural schools, and interestingly, they're more often middle schools across the Commonwealth, although in Lowell, the schools that have failed to reach aggregate targets, the five schools that have failed to reach them in both math and ELA are elementary schools. But generally, across the state, it's middle schools. The state released MCAS scores today, so I've not had much opportunity yet to analyze them, but it does appear that the trend we most closely watch is the composite proficiency index, the so-called CPI, and to look at trends across time. It looks like statewide, for grade ten, for our high school scores for English Language Arts and Mathematics have gone up. Our preliminary analysis is our scores at the high school have gone up more than, at a higher rate than the statewide scores. But again, we'll, once we have an opportunity to analyze all those scores, we'll get them to you. In Lowell, grade four and eight, MCAS results in Mathematics are up, and it appears to be higher than the state rate of improvement, which is very good news, because in some ways, when you introduce, all the research tells us that when you introduce a new math program, which we did for K-8, it takes at least four years for that to begin to show up in actual changes in standardized test scores. And so, these are results after three years of implementation of math at grades four and eight. So it's the culmination of the elementary program and the culmination of the eighth-grade program. Our grade six scores in math appear to be down some, and so we're, that may not ultimately be cause to worry if they're getting there by eighth grade, but we wanna look at the sequence of the curriculum for, in the connected math program, to see if we're, it's aligned tightly enough with the MCAS requirements. So obviously, we're gonna take a close look at that. Our scores in reading English Language Arts in grades three, four, and seven are flat for the second year in a row. That apparently is, based on the release from the state today, similar to what's happened at the state level. So this issue of flat scores in reading English Language Arts is a concern statewide, and we are concerned about it. You have, as part of the report, just a note, notice there, about four of the high priorities that the school committee has funded for this year, particularly to address those most pressing needs. The middle school math and reading, we're expanding the time spent on math, mathematics for every youngster, providing remedial support, reinforcement, and acceleration for those youngsters who are ready for it. It's building off of last year's successful acceleration model, where we saw eighth graders who successfully completed the acceleration, the extra intervention for acceleration in algebra, the typical eighth grader scored the same at the end of the year on the district test as the graduates of the honors algebra class in ninth grade. So we know that we're on the right track with that, we're expanding that. Similarly, for at-risk readers at the middle school level, we're expanding the time and intervention program there. The purchase of elementary reading materials and intervention plan for at-risk, for the most at-risk readers at elementary level, we're hope, we hope, will help us get those flat MCAS scores moving again. And the freshman remedial course, which the school committee invested a significant, was willing to invest a significant amount of resources, human resources and materials, is off and running for nearly two-hundred-and-fifty freshmen who are at most at risk of failure because of reading issues. And then further development of our teaching strategies that support English Language learners, which for us here in Lowell is critical. One quarter of our students do not yet have adequate proficiency in English to perform in regular classroom work without some assistance and support. That's a clear, clear high priority for us. I also included in this brief update a listing of ten requirements that are proposed under Board of Education regulations that are to be considered this next month. That would be criteria that schools that move into the restructuring or corrective action part of in need of improvement would have to meet. So I think they're gonna be very important for us to look at, from a policy point of view, how we, how well we achieve these ten. I'm very pleased that most of them appear to be fully implemented here in Lowell and permissible under our collective bargaining agreement. So, that's important for us to have, but I thought committee would wanna know that, and there may well be some policy discussions that we'll need to have as these regulations are approved, as I expect they will be at the state level. So I'd welcome any questions about the latest report.
Thank you. Mr. McHugh?
Yes, just briefly, I know you brought this up in the past, and I think it'd be an interesting report to do, and I'm not, obviously, looking to make reports. I'm really interested in seeing what has happened to the students that have continued to stay in our system. And I mean, maybe we could take a snapshot, maybe looking at the underperforming schools here, or looking at just the middle schools or something, 'cause that would give us some trends. I'm more concerned that, how many started with us, or where are they? Like, you know, if the student started from grade one with us, and has now had a chance to come up through our elementary program to take advantage of those English Language Learners programs that we put in with the reading and writing early on, and now the math, to see where they are. 'Cause now we have a little bit of history as far as what those students are doing versus a student who has not been with us. And maybe just that kind of snapshot would give us some more data to show where we're going with this. 'Cause I think, I'm hoping that it would show that if students come through our program from start to finish, those are the students that we can show that progress. You know, I know I can't get individual names of students, but I'm not looking for that, but maybe a summary of how that looks, that might be very helpful to kinda show our strengths and weaknesses as well.
Madam Superintendent?
I think that would be very helpful. I know that you know this committee member, McHugh, but the biggest weakness of the MCAS is that it does not look at the same youngsters year to year to year. It does simply, it is not a tool for looking at student growth over time. It assesses one group of fourth graders and then a different group of fourth graders. It does not help us look at individual student growth and development, strengths and weaknesses. So, it's a useful tool for some purposes, but developing and tracking a couple of things. One, for youngsters, for example, that have been at our inner elementary school from kindergarten through fourth grade, what's their typical performance on MCAS compared to youngsters who we've only had for a shorter number of years? Might be something that can help us understand how effective we're being with kids when we're able to have them for a number of years.
I guess I'm, maybe I'm not clarifying it clearly. If I look at an eighth grader, and I look at Sally Smith, what is Sally Smith from the time she started with us, MCAS scores? You know, I'm comparing the same child have been. Has that child progressed by needs improvement, needs improvement, needs improvement, or they've got proficient? You know, so I'm looking at, the children that have been with our system up through grade eight, and, 'cause I think that would probably give us a better snapshot of that type of child, not, you know, I'm not looking for Sally Smith versus Harry Smith next year, because they are, I understand, they're two different children, you can't compare that. I'm looking for the like child, to just track the individual children that who have been with us as long as possible, and using that, is there a correlation that if they, if a child stays from start through grade eight, are we showing improvement from their first time they took an MCAS test, whether it's English Language, you know, all the way up through eighth grade? So, you know, I'm kinda saying that, where are they going? Are they going up, are they going flatline, or they going backwards as they move up through our system? So, I think that's the analogy I'm trying to use.
We can certainly gather that information for you. The limitation of it is that the, unlike, for example, the Scholastic Reading Inventory, which is set up to look at progress over time, the MCAS is a different test each time you take it, so they're not comparable. So a youngster could get, you know, a needs improvement score on the third grade reading test, and get a different score on the fourth grade ELA, without it reflecting any growth or progress, because they're not, the tests are not designed to be tests that you look at over time. But I'm happy to get that information, 'cause it may be, it may tell us something that's useful.
Yeah, I guess I'm looking for some correlation, 'cause I firmly believe that we've, this committee has done a lot of, with your administration, a lot of improvements at the younger levels, understanding that we're gonna reap the benefits as they, the longer they stay. And I think, I'm looking for a way to maybe justify that, to see if that's working or not working, and I, maybe it's something that, through your situation, when you do go meet with Dave Driscoll or the Superintendent's Association, maybe there's a way to fine-tune it so that we can get better data down the road to justify where we're going with this, because if there is no correlation, it just makes it very difficult, and it's easy for people to say, well, last year's grade four class, you know, we're all, you know, we're better than this year, and we're falling behind. I understand they're completely into different children, and you can't just, I think, put that mark on, say they're all gonna be excellent. I mean, we'd like that to happen, but there's just so many things that make that child up, we can't always clearly say that. So, I'm trying to use a different correlation to get some data. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Leahy?
Thank you. I had a question also, a comment that's kinda relevant to this with what Mr. McHugh's talking about, MCAS and needs improvement, that at the, a visit at the high school last week, we, last year we identified students that are underperforming in reading. We made great improvements, we are servicing about two-hundred-and-eighty students this year, but we're leaving behind another hundred-and-twenty. So I would hope that at next week's motion, at next week's meeting of the high school Subcommittee, that we address this. If we need to hire another teacher, we need to hire another teacher for this, because it all correlates with the MCAS. Last year, we didn't have another room, we found one this year. We can find another reading teacher for these children, so I think it all ties in, and I'd like someone to bring that up maybe next week at the Subcommittee meeting. Thank you.
Ms. Fatacante?
As a member of the Lowell High Subcommittee, Mr. Leahy has a point. We were, we selected a finite number of students, and we did what we needed to do to ensure their success, but he is correct. Because of some funding constrictions, because of room constrictions, some students were not selected for the extra enhancement, and he's right. We need to be doing a better job of figuring out how we're going to take the whole number of students who have not scored well on the MCAS in their reading scores, and how we're going to, how we're going to put those students in an enhancement program. I mean, clearly, we, and when it happened, it never even occurred to me that we were not fulfilling the mission for the whole group of youngsters, that we were only fulfilling the mission for a small group of youngsters. So we, you're right, we do need to go back to the drawing board, we do need to find the money, we do need to see if the program that these young people are in is currently successful, because it is successful, then that success can be replicated for the youngsters who got left behind. And, you know, we're in this no child left behind era right now, and yet we ourselves, because of a budget restraint and other considerations, left some kids behind, and we need to figure out collectively as a school committee, how we're not, how we're going to not do that again next year.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes, Your Honor, I feel like I have to weigh in on this issue. I was at the high school with Mr. Leahy during the nine-eleven ceremony, and we went over to the freshman academy to take a look at these students who are participating in this new Read-180 program that we've invested, as my colleagues have mentioned, not enough money into, because we weren't able to cover all the students in need of it. But I have to say, I was very concerned to find out, here we were at the beginning of the third week of school, and these students, the ones who were in the program, the two-hundred-and-forty or eighty, whatever that number is, that were, had been selected based on data that the school department had from their eighth grade experience, so they had notice of who these students were and all that, were still not clear on their scheduling of whether they were in fact in that particular room. So, there wasn't as much, in fact, the students had not been on the computers at all yet, because at the time, we were out in the hall, we had been in one classroom, and I expressed concern that the schedules were still messed up with these kids. Here it is, the third week of school, and I was assured that these students, for the most part, were taken care of, because in fact, they were identified at the end of last year. And as we stood in the hall, the classroom that had the other Read-180 students in it, the door opened, and ten students came filing by, and class had just begun. That's why we were out in the hall, we didn't wanna disrupt what was going on in the classroom. And I said, where are you going? And they said, oh, we have to go to the guidance office, because the teacher doesn't have us on her roster. So, I mean, as much as I would like to get all those students in, and certainly we need to look at that next year, when we do our budget, as we know, the budget was very tight this year, there's not an expectation we're gonna have tons of money next year either, my initial concern is that we are actually doing the job well with the students that we have in the program, and the money that we have already invested in the program. And that is certainly something that is on the agenda for the high school Subcommittee next Monday, and though I really, I hear what Mr. Leahy is saying about the hundred students that we're trying to catch in these other safety nets, I think it really behooves us to make sure that we are doing the job with the funding and the students that we have in place, first off, and I am concerned about that.
Thank you. Okay. Motion to accept the Superintendent's report, his report of progress by Mr. Leary, seconded by Mr. Leahy. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, the motion's approved. Next report on Administrative Apprentice Program, Madam Superintendent?
Yes, the committee has a brief report from me on the Administrative Apprentice Program that the committee approved last spring. The first page is the background, and the second page just reports that the apprentice cohort group of eight members of our faculty has been selected, and they will be beginning the apprentice program in October.
Any questions? Motion to accept the report by Mr. McHugh, seconded by Ms. Martin. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, the report is accepted. Next is home education, Madam Superintendent?
Yes, a request for home education that requires school committee approval.
A motion to approve by Ms. Fatacante, seconded by Mr. McHugh. Roll call, please.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McHugh?
Yes.
Mia Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Ms. Fatacante? Seven yays, approved.
Thank you. Madam Superintendent, I noticed it's not on the agenda, but we did get a report from you on the status of elevators?
Yes.
In the schools, and I don't know, it may be worthy of comment, I have heard from personnel in various schools that are under the impression that it's gonna take upwards of six months to get some of these elevators operational, and that's clearly contrary to the report. It sounds like, from the report, that most of these are scheduled for reinspection or repair by the end of the month. I don't know if you wanted to comment?
Yes, committee members have at their desks this evening a report on... Um, yes, committee members have at their desks this evening a report on the status of elevators. Committee member McHugh has, had requested that we keep the committee updated about the status of the repairs, and as it indicates, most of the inspections are scheduled, the number of them are scheduled for Friday, September 22nd. Work is completed on several, and we're just awaiting inspection, and there are a couple of schools where there have been complications, for example, at the Wang and Sullivan. Those two sites require the installation of a circuit board that had to be engineered and then manufactured. The Sullivan is scheduled for inspection on Friday, September 22nd. So there'll be, there'll be an extension filed, but we know that they're coming in, the circuit boards are coming in that day. So a lot of progress has been made. It's still frustrating that we don't have all of the elevators functional, but we're clearly zeroing in on completion dates in the very near future.
Okay. Motion, I actually should have had a motion to suspend the rules to entertain this matter by Ms. Dougherty, seconded by Mr. Leahy. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Ms. Dougherty?
Yes, Your Honor, I have a question. I'm sorry, I don't have the report right in front of me. Does it address the high school elevator problem?
Um, yes. I'm sorry, I thought that these were all handed out.
But I am specifically-
I thought it was on the desk tonight.
I'm sorry, I thought they were handed out. My apologies. It speaks specifically to the high school, that work continues to be done on the older car in the 22 building. It was necessary to remove the motor from the shaft to upgrade it to lift the rate, rated weight. Work is complete on the 1980 car, and the chairlift that are slated for reinspection, again, on the 22nd. The vendor has completed work on the newer car in the 22 building, but a second vendor is needed to reprogram the panel. But it's now scheduled for an appointment for September 26th.
Okay. Motion to accept the report as a report of progress by Mr. McHugh, seconded by Ms. Dougherty. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? The report is accepted. Under new business-
Can I, excuse me?
Yes.
Can I just ask one question about this?
I'm sorry.
About the elevators?
Go ahead.
Okay. Through you to Mr. Lang. In the next week, when we meet for our facilities meeting, could you just give us the policy on why, it seems like this, they're city-owned buildings, and they take care of them, but could you just give us an explanation on why we're responsible for the elevators? It just seems like maybe that's something also that needs to be clear to everybody, you know, why, I don't know why we're taking care of the elevators, but if it's a longstanding agreement, then that's what it is, but.
Yeah, I'd be happy to fully report out of the facilities subcommittee. There are certain building issues that just historically the school department's taken care of. Elevators within the schools are one. Another one is the energy management systems within the schools that operate the HVAC systems. We are the ones that contract with those vendors to provide the maintenance. There are, there are a handful, but I'd be happy to review them with the facilities subcommittee.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay. And under new business, we have, first item is the distinguished alumni awards program. Madam Superintendent?
Um, yes, the distinguished alumni planning committee for the distinguished alumni awards at Lowell High School is planning this year's reception for Thursday, October 19th, at the Cyrus Irish Auditorium at the Lowell High School. There are, the five honorees for this year offer quite a range of diversity, from a member of the very first class of Lowell High School 175 years ago, to, to a graduate from the 1980s. So it's quite a variation, it should be a very special night. Last year, the committee voted to, to authorize approval to obtain a one-day liquor license for that program, and we're bringing that recommendation forward again to do that again this year.
Call on the liquor license, please.
Motion to approve the request for one-day liquor license by Ms. Fattacante?
No, I do not want to vote in favor of it, Your Honor.
All right.
That's why I'd like a roll call.
Okay. So, somebody else want to have a drink that night?
I'll make the motion.
Uh, motion by Ms. Dougherty, seconded by Ms. Martin. Roll call, please.
Mr. Leahy?
No.
Mr. Larry?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McHugh?
Yes.
Mia Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Ms. Fattacante?
No.
Five yeas, two nays, approved.
Next item is authorization to implement oral health project. Madam Superintendent?
Um, yes, we, our staff have been working for more than a year to make this a possibility for, for our students, and we're now in a position with, with school committee authorization to bring at no cost, and in conjunction with the Lowell Health Department, a portable dental clinic to Lowell Public Schools' students. And so we, there's been a lot of work that's gone into collaboration with the city health department around this, and it looks like a very exciting way for us to provide a service for our youngsters that's desperately needed by many of our youngsters and families.
Okay. Ms. Dougherty?
Yes, through you, Your Honor, I have a question. Does this mean that students will be getting dental exams or work during the school day?
I'm going to ask Assistant Superintendent Murphy to address that.
Yes, what, what will happen is that the, the portable dental labs will come into the schools, there'll be a scheduled time, the dentists will come in, they'll have a certain time that they'll work with the students, and that, they're specifically targeting students who have mass health. That's where the funding is coming from. They will be doing cleanings, restorations, sealants, depending on what the students But the project is coming about because there are so few students who have mass health insurance that actually see dentists and get oral health care, that through the Department of Public Health, this oral health care project came about. They are in the taunt in public schools, they are beginning their projects, they're opening their clinics, the beginning of next month in New Bedford, and they've been looking to come into Lowell, and I know that my colleagues have been working on this for a few years. I've met, I've had three meetings with, with the group. We, we have a long way to go with it, but we are looking to, to bring the project, the portable dental units, into the schools. There will be time when students will be out of school, but it will be a minimal time compared to the program that the Health Department is, is currently working on now, which is a sealant program, where the students go over to Middlesex Community College, and sometimes those students are gone for a considerable part of the school day.
Anything further? Okay. Is there a motion to approve by Ms. Fattacante, seconded by Ms. Martin? Roll call, please.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McHugh?
Yes.
Mia Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Ms. Fattacante?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Okay, there are five convention conference requests.
I'm sorry, Your Honor, through you to the superintendent. Madam Superintendent, last meeting, I had a question. Did we get the answer to that yet?
No, we do not have the answer to that question yet.
Item number one, Your Honor, could we refer to that without outlining it? This is a field trip for students, item number one on the conference request?
Mm-hmm.
Yes? So could, somebody explain to me why it's not for students? Right. No, it's, this is a preparation for an approved field trip to Madrid. Is the field trip for students? The approved, okay, it is.
Yes.
So why is it coming out of LHS Professional Development Funds? See, I would think that if this were a trip for teachers at the high school, and it's an educational developmental trip, then clearly we would take the money from Professional Development Funds. I'm not seeing that here, and I cannot make the connection. Somebody needs to explain it to me, or else I cannot vote that the money comes from this Professional Development Funds.
I, I believe the thinking is, and I can go back and get some additional information if, if the committee would like it, but I believe the thinking is that the, the teacher needs, needs this experience to develop the knowledge and skills needed to lead the trip for students. So that's why it falls under Professional Development. Because it is developing the skills and knowledge of the teacher-
To take a field trip.
Teacher, so that he can lead a trip for students to Europe.
A trip which is a supplemental matter within the school department?
Yes.
I need some more information on that. And Madam Superintendent, could you forward that with us, to us as soon as possible? I mean, it's, it's, it's two weeks now since the last request, and, and we still don't have any information, and I would like to discuss this at the next meeting. Please. I have no problem with them going on this trip, absolutely none. I'm just concerned, again, because the, the pocket of money last week was $600 in Professional Development. This is another $200 in Professional Development. We have a small pocket of Professional Development money. And if, and here's my thinking, unless the skill being learned is being brought back to enhance the develop, the Professional Development of our teachers, I'm thinking, and that it be used in the classroom, then I'm thinking that it's not necessarily proper for the money to come from Professional Development Funds. There is a finite pocket, and, and if we keep raiding the pocket, there will be no more money to send people to a, a, a reading incentive program, or a math incentive program.
If I could just comment, the Professional Development is, is, but not, my knowledge, it's not been limited to only classroom use, that the, that a, the field trip for foreign language students to Europe is an, is a co-curricular activity, an extension of the classroom. And I think that's the thinking of the headmaster in approving the use of Professional Development Funds. We can certainly go back and, and look at that-
Please.
What I'd like to suggest is that you authorize the trip, because it's scheduled for October 5th, and our next meeting isn't until the 4th, but that, but that in terms of where the dollars come from, what account, we'd be happy to, we'd be happy to bring that.
My, my, my colleague's making a suggestion, through you, Your Honor-
Ms. Martin?
I'm sorry, I was just going to say, we can get the information at the high school subcommittee.
That'd be great.
So that that won't hold us up.
That's a good solution.
That's Monday. That's great.
Well, the subcommittee can't vote to approve the trip, can it?
Right. I, I mean, I, I have no problem with giving permission to the trip. Obviously, this person is going, and there's nothing that we can do to stop this person, well, actually, there, there's little we can do at this point to stop this person from going on this trip. My concern is not the trip, it's where the money's coming from. Please.
Just offer the suggestion that you approve, authorize the trip tonight, and then we'll bring to the Lowell High School Subcommittee meeting, information about the source of funds for the substitute cost, and, and we'll bring that for, for subcommittee consideration at its next meeting, but that you authorize the trip tonight.
I, I would accept that, Your Honor. Would my colleagues accept that?
Okay.
Okay.
All right. So moved by, who?
I'll move that we accept-
Motion of Ms. Fattacante to approve these trips, subject to a subsequent report to the high school subcommittee on the source of funding to pay for number one, or the substitute cost for number one.
Yeah.
Second, is there a second on that? By Mr. Leahy, uh, Mr. Leary, I'm sorry, Mr. Leahy.
I had, one other question I had too, I guess, is, our next subcommittee meeting, our next regular school committee meeting, does, does that fall on the 4th, did we say? Okay. I, when you add this up, though, it would be one, two, three days for substitutes, then? So I always find this, that the money never adds up. If it's $80 a day, it would be $240. If it's $100 a day, it'd be $200. So I don't understand why the money never adds up to the days of substitutes.
I'll have to get that information for you. We'll have that for the subcommittee meeting as well.
That'd be great. Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay. Roll call on the motion.
Mr. Leahy?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Larry?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McHugh?
Yes.
Mia Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Ms. Fattacante?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Okay. I believe that concludes the agenda. Motion to adjourn by Ms. Fattacante, seconded by Mr. McHugh. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, withstand adjourn.
Nine eleven. Yeah. Good job, hon.